I mean, just for the break is fine, so I have to let Kevin do it. When we go to the press.
I'm trying.
I mean, just for the break is fine, so I have to let Kevin do it. When we go to the press. I don't have my. I had a heck of a day. I was on my way to each other. I was trying to survive. We're trying to anticipate the next move, so they can go to there. You don't know. I mean, just for the break is fine, so I have to let Kevin do it. When we go to the press. I don't have my. I had a heck of a day. I was on my way to each other. I was trying to survive. I'm gonna leave this up here. That's your four, back, spotlight. Okay? And I'm like, I'm looking at vegetables. Because I grew up with the grocery business, and now somebody else is taking it. They don't order each other, it doesn't get in order. It's a waking bad brush. I'm glad I didn't. Steve, I'll look you up next time. Yeah. That's more a laugh than a laugh. Please. I just want to be here all night with you guys. Actually, I wouldn't. My kids will be in bed by the time I get home. Hey, sounds like winning banana. Get rich, get rich. There are checks. That'll love our checks. She's not here. Penny's full. By the penny. Goodness, she got about an hour. Tell her ahead of time. Yeah, we're okay. I like it. We're on time.
Good evening, I'd like to call this Tuesday, August 20th, 2019, meeting of Middletown City Council to order. Please stand and join me in moment meditation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Skank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Mulligan.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan. Here. All right, our first stop this evening is the public hearing regarding text amendment case 1-19, planning zoning divisions, Middletown Development Code, consideration of text amendments to Middletown Development Code pertaining to Chapter 1226, review authority and procedures, and Chapter 1228, enforcement and penalties. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, this is text amendments pertaining to the enforcement and penalties chapters of the Development Code, and will strengthen staff's ability to uphold that code. The changes were made to add the civil penalties that you had voted for for the rest of the codified ordinances earlier in the year for the Middletown Development Code. Legal notice was published regarding the proposed text amendments 30 days prior to the city council public hearing. Planning Commission has recommended approval of the text amendments to Chapter 1226, review authority and procedures, and Chapter 1228, enforcement and penalties, as submitted at their meeting held on July 10th, 2019. You'll have a first reading this evening to add those to the code.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, I'll open the public hearing this evening regarding the text amendment case 1-19. Anyone to speak in favor of the proposed text amendment? All right, anyone to speak in opposition to the proposed text amendment? All right, hearing done. We'll close that public hearing and move on to the next one before lightning strikes again. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, we have been working for almost past two years now on our housing, and the first step along the way was honestly an evaluation in 2016 of what was happening with Middletown property values, and what I had found as city manager doing some analysis was that during a four-year period from 2011 to 2015, our residential housing value had dropped $58 million in the aggregate over that period at a time when the recession was ending and the rest of Butler County was on the way up. That gave us some real pause and gave us the chance to start trying to figure out what was going on in the city. So in 2017, we assembled the informations behind you on all of the charts. You guys have seen this probably several times over the last couple of years. But what we did is we went census tract by census tract, and we tried to get an understanding of what was going on in each of those census tracts in about 18 different areas. Poverty, crime, infrastructure, rentals, on and on and on, with the idea of coming up with at least an understanding of what was going on with our housing in Middletown, and then give us some time then to go ahead and do some analysis to what we should do, if anything, to make changes. The other thing I did is I started pulling out a lot of our old master plans and taking a look at things. One of the things that struck me most significantly was this is the 1963 Middletown Master Plan, and that happened to be the year I was born, which means this was created 56 years ago. If you look at the yellow, it was deteriorating. If you look at the black splotches, it's still appetated. And when you look at the charts around the room, many of those line up with the exact same areas that we were talking about in 1963, which means for over 50 years, we've identified it as a problem, and we've not been able to take significant action to make it better. So I issued kind of the challenge out that, you know, we're at a place where after 50 years, we should either fix it and make it healthy again, or we should look at getting rid of it and getting it out of our housing stock. One of the other things we did during 2016 while we were trying to get a handle on what was going on is we asked Danter to do a nice housing study for us, a kind of pretty full-range housing study, several hundred pages. The executive summary basically said, "It's great when you have limited supply and you're fully occupied, but the best results are from demand for housing in your community, not just limiting supply." They identified a significant potential for mixed use, residential, retail, commercial. They identified multifamily housing that would be advantageous for us to add to our housing stock. And then they talked downtown about developing housing over our storefronts. One thing I found really interesting as I was going through the detail on that is this is five-year demand, annual demand in the Middletown area, in the city of Middletown, that they believed that we could hit every year if we could build new construction to this level, which obviously we can't. But, you know, they're saying, you know, when you look at 150,000 up, we could build 127 houses and sell them every year for the next five years. We could do 33 condos over 150,000 and sell them each of the next five years, and we could absorb 670 new market rate multifamily units and seniors each of the next five years if we could do it, which means there's pent-up demand, but unfortunately, not a lot of housing available for them to live in. So we started now with all this data behind you and the Danter study, started talking about how do we create a balanced housing stock? And the idea behind a balanced housing stock, it's not a real thing, it's more of an idea. The idea would be that as you move up and down, as you get older, you have kids, you get more affluent, you go to retirement, you go through different phases in your housing, where the first thing you do is move out from your parents' house, you end up getting into a house, most of us, and you get a bigger house when you have your kids, eventually you're an empty nester, and eventually you're in retirement. What's happening right now is because 70% of our housing is starter homes, what happens is as people start either growing in their family or growing in their income, and they want to move up, there's no place for them to go. We simply don't have the housing. And so what you're seeing is they are migrating out of Middletown and going to places like Springboro, Westchester, and Mason. And so the idea is how can we start moving our housing around in a way over time where no matter where you are in the housing cycle, whether you're moving up or moving down, you have a lot of quality options available to stay in Middletown if you choose to, if you want to live here? And so with that, all of this in mind, we created a housing committee in 2019, and we said we were going to look at each of these 12 issues. Tax delinquent property, vacant residential property, vacant residential land, property maintenance code compliance, housing buffer around heavy industry, homeownership, rental housing, less competitive housing, healthy neighborhood infrastructure, non-infrastructure aspects of a healthy neighborhood, and gentrification. And then the idea would be if we could figure out what we were going to be doing in each of these areas, we could then turn around and select a neighborhood for revitalization and apply the first 11 in the 12th area to one neighborhood and start bringing it back. We started this in May of 2018. We spent over a full evening on each of these topics. All the meetings were videotaped, and the presentations were all placed on the city webpage. They've been available for the entire time we've been doing this, and so now it's ready to come to you. We started with a general assumption that we wanted to work from least intrusive to most intrusive, and the idea would be the last thing we want to do, if the last person we want to impact is our homeowners that are already in our city. So if we can do something positive to a vacant property, that's the easy and low-hanging fruit. We'll work into out-of-town landlords when the property is vacant, local landlords when the property is vacant, and when we can work with them. And eventually, if we are successful over a 10-year period or 15-year period, eventually we will come to a place where we will have homeowners that are going to need to take action with the city, and we will have to deal with them at some point down the road. But the idea is you start with the easy, work to the hard. We started the first evening talking about tax delinquent property, and I'm going just from the data that was provided from us by the U.S. Census and by the auditor's site. We had, at that time, 1,276 parcels that were subject to tax foreclosure within the city of Middletown. What that means is they were more than a year behind on their property taxes. They owed us a combined amount of almost $6.2 million in delinquent taxes that were due. We then did an analysis in-house that said, "Well, we know where those parcels are, we know those addresses are." We found that 374 of those parcels also had water balances that were more than 60 days past due, and they owed us almost $50,000 in past due water. 137 of those parcels had delinquent income taxes. They owed us $67,000 in delinquent income tax. 304 of those parcels had never filed income tax, and if you use the median income off the census site of $36,898, that theoretically was worth another almost $400,000 in uncollected revenue for the city. Of that 6.2 million, that 4.5 million was due to the school district, which means they're going to be coming here in the next couple of years, I would guess, for another levy for operating at some point. Be nice to put that off if they have that extra $4.5 million in the bank that they don't have. So, we sat and after discussing it for, you know, again, part of the evening, we will look at tax foreclosure for at least the least intrusive to most intrusive impact, organized by neighborhood, consistent with the overall housing policy and other global recommendations. If we go through the tax foreclosure process, we will use the land bank and put the house back into productive use consistent with, again, the remainder of this policy regarding vacant housing and vacant land. The idea is that we can't let that sit indefinitely forever, and we are at some point, especially while we're in a neighborhood like Oakland, we would work on the neighborhoods that we're working on actively. Second one is vacant residential property. As of the 2016 estimate by the U.S. Census, we were at that time sitting on about 3,401 vacant housing units. We talked that evening that there are some natural vacancies that are created that are not actually bad for the city. There are houses for sale. Somebody got transferred, and they moved to Montana, and their house is for sale. That's just the nature of the business. You have rentals that are in between tenants or being renovated or whatever. We have a number of people in Middletown that are retired, that leave for the winter and go down to warmer climate. Those are normal, positive things that are not necessarily a problem for us in vacancy. However, when you look overall, we are sitting at about 14.8% of our housing stock that was vacant, at least in 2016 estimate. Butler County is at 9.6% when you take us out and the remainder of Butler County, which means if we were to apply that 9.6% to Middletown, if we looked like the rest of Butler County, we'd have another 1,200 homes occupied in the city at any given time. And so the question then became, well, what does that do to us financially? And the answer, again, I took the median family incomes, we don't know who would be in or out of any particular home, but for the discussion purposes, if you took the median family income of $36,898, times that 1,195 homes that would be occupied if we looked like the rest of Butler County, the answer is you'd have about $3.25 million every year in new income tax, which, you know, if you want to get down and dirty, which we like to talk about paving, that's an extra three streets every year we could pave if those houses were occupied instead of sitting empty as they are now. We talked about some of our vacancy tools for empty homes. We've done some work with the land bank. Oakland's going to look at some, doing some more of that. The land bank often is, I call it a flipper, but it's under our control because we would have control of the house and control who's flipping that house and under what conditions. We've worked with SELF, who's here tonight, on a house over on Lafayette, where we took it in the land bank, they've renovated it and put a homeowner back into it, using it to teach people construction skills. Butler Tech is also having a similar program. We've worked in the past with the Atrium Foundation for Institutional, where they have taken houses and we've worked with them to get them back into productive use. Down payment assistance, we could target to different places where we want to get infill vacancy down. Hamilton, if you remember a few years ago, when they were doing the Mercantile Project, used interns to help fill some of their positions. When I talked to Joshua last year, he said of those interns that came into town and used those facilities, that about eight out of 10 of them ended up staying in Hamilton and became permanent residents. Nice. Housing to professionals. Marla's talked about trying to get urban school teachers to come and live in the city that they're teaching in. Atrium Medical Center, city employees, first responders, there's housing incentives out there for professionals if we wanted to look at that. Some communities have used at least a home program. Cincinnati has what they call a land cooperative, which, again, this is 10,000-foot stuff. Renovation programs and code compliance help are all things that could help fill vacant houses. Our third issue was vacant residential land. During the recession, we have demolished almost 600 homes. I've always said that that was a great first step. Those homes were obsolete. They were, in many cases, after sitting two or three years, filled with mold. They had leaky roofs. They were being squatted in. They were doing drug activity in them. And I've never had a problem with the houses that we have taken down. However, I've always thought that that should be the first step because what we've created now is over 500 lots in the city that we are mowing at a cost of about $1.5 million a year, and we have no plan at this time to stop mowing them ever. And that's a bad plan. So, we have, over the past several years, sold several to the next-door neighbor. We've done a handful of those every year for the last year. But what we often find is that there's landlords on both sides, and the last thing they want to do is mow more grass for their rental units. So, we've talked about, you know, what we can do for handling vacant lots. There are a lot of tools out there. They've been turned into basketball courts. They've had civic groups adopt a lot, green space, pocket parks, off-street parking lots, infill construction, again, sales to a neighbor, mow to own, which we've had some mixed success with over the last couple of years. Public art, walking trails through the neighborhood, those are all things that other communities have done. And so what I did is I tried to put together at least conceptually an idea of how we could handle vacant lots. And the idea would be when we see a vacant lot, we can kind of go through the tree and say, "Is it in one of our industrial buffer zones?", which we're going to talk about in a little bit. But yes, do this. If it's no, go on. Is it in a revitalization neighborhood? Yes or no? Is it a buildable lot? Is it at a gateway to the neighborhood? Is there a neighbor that wants it for a side yard? And the idea is to follow that path down the road and to have an idea of where we should take each of these public lots to get rid of them over time. Fourth issue we charged our committee with was property maintenance code compliance. One of the things I found interesting is when I mapped the tax delinquent property and I mapped the code enforcement violations, you find out that they line up pretty well. And what we find is that those tax delinquent properties, they're not paying their property taxes. In many cases, they can't pay their water, they also can't keep their house up. And I would submit, and we've talked about this as a group quite a bit, there's a point where the answer is you can't afford to live where you're living. It's just the truth of the matter. If you can't pay your water, and you can't keep your property up, and you can't pay your taxes, you're living beyond your means, and we're going to have to talk about how we handle that over time. We have several standards in place, and we've added one recently. We've got the International Property Maintenance Code, which is our property maintenance code for the city of Middletown. We've got our local nuisance ordinances, which cover trash and tall grass. We have the chronic nuisance ordinance, which gets into drug-related and repeated property basements nuisances. And then this year, we've added civil penalties with the idea that if taking you to court for a criminal conviction is maybe not the best idea, maybe we can get you civilly to help you get you done, get you back into compliance. The goal, of course, is to have 100% of our structures back in property maintenance code compliance. We've got a lot of tools that we've used in the past that we can look at again. We've had, of course, voluntary compliance. We've had the volunteer improvement program, which is where you basically said, "I have the labor, I just can't afford the materials." We've had, in the past, used CDBG money to say, "I'll buy the gutter, the downspout. If you can put it up, we'll help you." We've done, obviously, courts and liens and civil penalties. We've done abatement at times. We've had group work camps with our friends from SELF for several years, come in and do multiple houses at the same time each week every other year. Baraka and other volunteer groups have been out in the community doing work to help low-income families. The landlords we've worked with, I think, better than we ever have to get them to help us keep properties in compliance. There are some energy and weatherization grants out there, and there are some historic preservation grants, which we've not spent a lot of time working on, but those are, again, things we can utilize to do that. So the question really then became, knowing that we've got structures that are out of compliance, knowing that we have these tools, how much do we care about property maintenance code compliance? And the committee said, "Yeah, it's pretty important." My second question was, "Well, what does that mean?" Because the International Property Maintenance Code not only has the exterior, which we've been fairly good at working on, but it also has interior requirements. If you get a product, a house, that's okay on the outside, but it's got aluminum tube wiring, and it's got plumbing problems, and it's got foundation problems, at some point, you're getting close to putting lipstick on the pig, as they used to say. And the answer is while it looks okay from the street, it's really not a viable house moving forward because someone's going to have to put $40,000, $50,000 into it to get it back to code compliance. So the question I gave to the group was, "Do we care about interior code compliance or external only? Are we willing to enforce the interior code provisions?" And the committee's response was, "To be viable housing stock, over time, we've got to start figuring out how to work on the internal stuff and external compliance both at the same time." We did not get into how we were going to do that. It was just a statement that as a policy, we should care about that and look at that in the future. What is the city's obligation to help owners who cannot afford repairs? And the answer is, you know, from the group, was that we can utilize the tools above that we've talked about before to assist the homeowners to gain compliance. We should not do it more than one time. And again, we've got a lot between people working cooperatively, SELF, and our volunteer groups. We've got a lot of resources, and our CDBG funds, our home funds. We have a lot of resources that we can help people who are trying to do the right thing. And we should, you know, the committee's responsible, we should help where we can, but we don't keep going back. If we can put you back together once, it's up to you to keep it up. And again, gets back to if you're going to continually get out of code compliance, you're probably living in a house that you can't afford to live in over time. Is there a threshold in dollars or a percentage of value where repairs no longer make sense? And that's more from the city's side. If we're going to invest CDBG dollars into a home, at some point, is it not worth putting it back together? And the answer is when internal and external repairs gain to gain compliance, become more than 50% of the auditor's stated value, we should look at demolition as the preferred outcome of that house. We'd be better off starting over. The fifth issue we looked at was creating a residential buffer from industrial areas. We've talked about this a lot. If you were building a city today, you would never put housing up against an active steel mill. But we did it, and I understand exactly why we did it. At the time, we had a lot of housing against the steel mill because we asked people to walk to work, and we had a lot of our workforce that came that way, and that's fine. But as we move forward, what has happened over time is that those houses have become less attractive to modern families. And what has happened is those have become rentals, and in many cases, they've become Section 8 rentals, and in many cases, they have fallen out of code compliance because, again, they don't, a lot of people do not want to live against the fence of an active steel mill. So we, you know, the map in front of you shows a 580,000-foot buffer, and that was for demonstration purposes to talk to the committee. But if you look at the housing in that buffer, that's over 2,000 homes that would theoretically be in that buffer area out of 22,000 total housing units, and it's approaching 10%. Go ahead, please. So in that evening, we knocked it into 10 different areas, and then the committee went area by area and looked at exactly what was there, exactly, commercial, residential, how far, and they made some recommendations on how we could look at each of these areas. In Area 4, most of Highland Street is right on AK Steel's fence. We should look at removing some of that housing against the fence over time, look at additional screening for the neighborhood. Area 5, we should look at removing some homes along Hill and Roosevelt over time and adding screening for the neighborhood. Crawford, look at removing housing along a university, look at additional screening. Oakland, we should incorporate the Oakland Revitalization Plan into the buffer concept and see any place where we should look at maybe not rebuilding infill construction, but removing housing against the AK Steel and heavy... And the committee said, yeah, it's pretty important. My second question was, well, what does that mean? Because the International Property Maintenance Code not only has the exterior, which we've been fairly good at working on, but it also has interior requirements. If you get a product, a house, that's okay on the outside, but it's got aluminum tube wiring, and it's got plumbing problems, and it's got foundation problems, at some point, you're getting close to putting lipstick on the pig, as they used to say. And the answer is while it looks okay from the street, it's really not a viable house moving forward because someone's going to have to put $40,000, $50,000 into it to get it back to code compliance. So the question I gave to the group was, do we care about interior code compliance or external only? Are we willing to enforce the interior code provisions? And the committee's response was, to be viable housing stock, over time, we've got to start figuring out how to work on the internal stuff and external compliance both at the same time. We did not get into how we were going to do that. It was just a statement that as a policy, we should care about that and look at that in the future. What is the city's obligation to help owners who cannot afford repairs? And the answer is, you know, from the group, was that we can utilize the tools above that we've talked about before to assist the homeowners to gain compliance. We should not do it more than one time. And again, we've got a lot between people working cooperatively, Self, and our volunteer groups. We've got a lot of resources, and our CDBG funds, our home funds. We have a lot of resources that we can help people who are trying to do the right thing. And we should, you know, the committee's response was, we should help where we can, but we don't keep going back. If we can put you back together once, it's up to you to keep it up. And again, gets back to, if you're going to continually get out of code compliance, you're probably living in a house that you can't afford to live in over time. Is there a threshold in dollars or a percentage of value where it makes, where repairs no longer make sense? And that's more from the city's side. If we're going to invest CDBG dollars into a home, at some point, is it not worth putting it back together? And the answer is, when internal and external repairs gain, to gain compliance, become more than 50% of the auditor's state of value, we should look at demolition as the preferred outcome of that house. We'd be better off starting over. The fifth issue we looked at was creating a residential buffer from industrial areas. We've talked about this a lot. If you were building a city today, you would never put housing up against an active steel mill. But we did it, and I understand exactly why we did it. At the time, we had a lot of housing against the steel mill because we asked people to walk to work. And we had a lot of our workforce that came that way, and that's fine. But as we move forward, what has happened over time is that those houses have become less attractive to modern families. And what has happened is those have become rentals, and in many cases, they've become Section 8 rentals. And in many cases, they have fallen out of code compliance because, again, they don't, a lot of people do not want to live against the fence of an active steel mill. So we, you know, the map in front of you shows a 500 and a thousand-foot buffer, and that was for demonstration purposes to talk to the committee. But if you look at the housing in that buffer, that's over 2,000 homes that would theoretically be in that buffer area out of 22,000 total housing units. I mean, it's approaching 10%. Go ahead, please. So in that evening, we knocked it into 10 different areas, and then the committee went area by area and looked at exactly what was there, exactly commercial, residential, how far. And they made some recommendations on how we could look at each of these areas. In Area 4, most of Highland Street is right on AK Steel's fence. We should look at removing some of that housing against the fence over time, look at additional screening for the neighborhood. Area 5, we should look at removing some homes along Hill and Roosevelt over time and adding screening for the neighborhood. Crawford, look at removing housing along a university, look at additional screening. Oakland, we should incorporate the Oakland Revitalization Plan into the buffer concept and see any place where we should look at maybe not rebuilding infill construction, but removing housing against the AK Steel and heavy industrial areas. Oakland, I'm sorry, Area 8, look more at Young and Calumet as we form revitalization plans for this neighborhood and see where it makes sense to look at removing housing. And Area 9 and 10, almost all of this fits into the buffer concept, and we should look at removal of housing in those areas as funding is available. And again, this is over a 10- to 20-year period. Sixth area we looked at was homeownership, and the first question was, you know, given post-recession and all the foreclosures, there's a whole group of people out there that have said they'll never own a home again. How important is homeownership? Do you need to, if the housing's in good shape, does it need to be home-owned to make a difference in the neighborhood? And if so, is there an ideal homeownership goal for the city of Middletown? Started with a comparison of how we compare to the rest of Butler County, Ohio, and the United States as a whole. We are at 47.4% rental. When you back us out, the entire rest of Butler County, including Hamilton, is only at 28.5%. So we are approaching 20% higher than the rest of Butler County. And so the question is, is there a smart way for us to start? I asked the committee, well, if we're going to set a homeownership goal, what should we be, what should that goal be? And the answer was, well, we'd love for it to be 71.5%, but why don't we start with the U.S. goal of 63.6%? If we could hit that, we can always make it a more aggressive goal as we move into the future. But frankly, moving at 10% to 20% would be a nice lift from where we're at. So that's where we set it. We talked about what tools were acceptable to promote homeownership. And one of the things we talked about is, there's really two ways to look at it. We can add new housing, which will tip it more towards homeownership and less towards rental. The other thing is, we talked about the buffer. If you're removing rentals from the area, you're also increasing your homeownership just by removing rentals as a percentage and taking them out of it. Then we talked about how would we fill our vacant houses, and we've already talked about the tools that we have put in place that we could use to fill vacant houses and make them with homeowners again. Talked about homeownership. When we flipped on to rental housing, single-family versus multifamily mixed, we are carrying the load, the rental load for Butler County. We're at 47.3. Middletown, when you back us out, we're about 20% higher than the rest of Butler County with rentals. And so we started, well, what should our overall ratio of rentals to homeowners be? Well, we said homeowners should be 63.6% to match the United States. Math is simple. We should set a residential rental rate of 36.4% to equal the 100%, which means we are looking at trying to create about 11% drop in the number of rental units as a percentage of total housing in the city. The other thing we looked at is the number of single-family homes versus multifamily being used as rentals in the city of Middletown. And the answer is, again, we are out of balance with the rest of the area. Middletown, of our total rentals, our total 9,286 rental, 44.9% of them are single-family homes. When you look at Butler County, it's, again, 34%. Look at Ohio, it's 38%. And when you look at our total number of single-family homes that are being used as rentals, that one jumped out. I mean, 23.8% of our single-family homes are rental homes in the city. That's almost a quarter of our houses are being used as rentals. Rest of Butler County is only 11%. And again, we are using too many of our single-family homes at this point as rental homes. We talked about what could we do about that? Well, obviously, we can add the new homeowner housing, add new market rate multifamily, which would take, again, change the balance between multifamily and single-family units being used as rentals, continue to demolish poor-quality rentals, remove single-family rentals in the industrial buffer area, fill vacant home, houses with homeowners. We could talk to landlords about converting some single-family rentals back to homeownership. And there are some communities that have a single-family rental tax. If you are going to use a single-family home as a rental in their city, they will charge you a fee to do that, to discourage you, and to basically limit the amount. Some communities actually have a limit that you can only use 10% of the houses as rental, and you have to get a license. And if you're the 11th person coming in and there's 10, can't get a license this year. Somebody else quits, you can do it. We are not advocating for that. Those are just tools that have been used in other committees, in other areas, and we are not, no one has advocated that that is something we should be looking at. We talked about multifamily demand. Again, if you add multifamily units, then the percentage of multifamily, the mix of multifamily and single-family changes simply by adding multifamily units. Danter says we could afford 670 a year for the next five years and fill them at market rate. I don't think that's going to happen, but it adds credence to the idea that if we could add more multifamily and reduce single-family, it would be good for the city overall. Global issue eight, less competitive housing. As I said, 70% of our homes are starter homes, which are, and we have some great starter homes that you can't get anywhere else in southwest Ohio, but we have too many of them. We have too many homes that are under $100,000. We have too many homes that are two bedrooms. We have too many pre-1970 homes. And so the idea is, over time, what could we do? And to give an idea of what that means, if you look at two-bedroom housing, if you were to balance with what Butler County looks like, the rest of Butler County, when you back us out, we would need to demolish 4,000 two-bedroom homes and replace them with three to four-bedroom homes if we wanted to balance with just what the rest of Butler County looks like. If you looked at it on under $100,000 housing, again, you would have to demolish almost $4,000, 4,000 homes under $100,000 and replace them with homes 150 to 500,000 if you wanted us to look like the rest of Butler County. And that's not necessarily what our goal is, but as a comparison of how, where we stand right now, and again, you get back to Danter. Danter says you could build 127 homes over $150,000 a year and fill them every year, 33 condos over $150,000 and fill them for each of the next five years. And so the idea is, again, what can we start doing to start heading in the right direction? This isn't something, none of this stuff is stuff that's going to happen in five years. This is 10 to 20 years of hard work, of taking advantage of opportunities, of looking for chances to remove poor-quality housing, looking for opportunities to add good housing, recruiting quality families. This is, again, the 50,000-foot view, but the idea is, again, how do you get rid of that less competitive housing? Well, a lot of it is in the industrial buffer. When you look at the housing that's up against AK's fence, an awful lot of it is two-bedroom. A lot of it is under 800 square feet. A lot of it is under $100,000. A lot of it's being used as single-family rentals. And so, again, you start looking at, when you reduce that number over time, you're solving four or five of your demographic areas. You're making impact on all of them with one removal of a house. We've had places where, when we were doing NSP, where we would take a two-bedroom house and there was room in the lot or upstairs to add a master suite. Add a nice master suite to the house, the two-bedroom becomes a three-bedroom, becomes a much more livable house in modern times. Infill construction, we can put some qualifications on that we want at least three bedrooms. We want over a certain dollar amount. We know we can add upscale condos. We have almost no condos in the city to buy. If we did, I'd probably buy one. And then new home construction, all over three, all over three bedrooms. And again, we would hope in the upper levels of that. We went on to talk about healthy neighborhoods and started asking, what are the characteristics of a healthy neighborhood? The first time we were talking about infrastructure, but we also talked about density. When you go into neighborhoods like Oakland or in the South End, you already have the infrastructure in place. And so the cost of adding a house and the services that are related to that house can generate up to 10 times more tax revenue per acre when you're looking at, you know, a one-acre site where you're running all the pipe down the road to one house and then on down the way to the next house and on down the way to the next house. Density also reduces costs by making active transportation more feasible. As we look at Oakland and we're looking at redoing that, we're going to look at walk and we're going to have those conversations about walkable neighborhoods and being able to walk to the grocery, being able to walk to convenience stores, laundromats, things like that, that the residents of that community would like to have. It makes biking and walking and public transportation much more feasible. Doesn't fit everywhere, but it's something we should look at when we're looking at our high-density neighborhoods. We talked about what are the characteristics of a healthy neighborhood. We talked about gateways, some community and neighborhood identification that gives some people some pride in the fact that they live in a certain neighborhood. Street lighting, we just talked at the last workshop, and you'll have a first reading tonight, on converting some of our streetlights to LED. We'll look at our decorative lights for downtown and some of other areas. And also light standards. We're looking at, from a crime standpoint, we have some neighborhoods that are not very well-lit, and there also tend to be our higher crime neighborhoods. Converting to LED will help, but we may need to, as we go into those neighborhoods, look at adding some street lighting that would allow those neighborhoods to be better lit as we go. The other thing I thought was very interesting is, we do not do a very good job with our alleys. They are trashy, they are overgrown. They are functional, but they need to be paved. And the thing that struck me when I was in Kansas City at a conference for city managers was they took us out on a tour of what they had done in some of their neighborhoods. And they had turned those alleys into where the neighborhood hung out because the houses in, like on the South End, where the houses are facing the street and there's not a lot of room, not a driveway. What became is, they turned the alleys into such nice places that people were using that as where they would gather in the neighborhood. And, you know, you build a garage and you see the Ohio State football game on in the garage and grillouts at the back, and they would turn those alleys into community meeting places. And we need to talk about how we can do a better job in our alleys. We should light them. We should do things to make them so there's less crime and things going on in there. And then, of course, also, beyond all that, paving and sidewalks, which has been a priority of council for several years now. Wayfinding signage, getting it consistent, getting the clutter out, and then putting in signs that make sense. We will be looking at that as we move forward. And then our parks, we're going to start looking at a master parks plan soon. We've got almost 30 parks. The question is, do we need all of them, or should we collapse to others and renovate more? Those are questions for another day. But again, having modern parks that would be attractive to our neighborhoods would be helpful. We then started talking about the non-infrastructure things that go into a neighborhood. What else? Once we fix the streets and we fix the sidewalks and the parks look nice, what else is, makes a neighborhood not just livable, but attractive? People want to live in that neighborhood. And it gets back to that balanced housing stock concept of, you know, I want a place where my kids can play. I want a place where I can do certain things. And the answer was, you know, the list we came up with was access to Wi-Fi, neighborhood business needs. When I met with the care group a few weeks ago, they were talking about, we need laundromats, we need access to food in certain neighborhoods, and there are things that we need that we don't have now, and we want to be able to either take the bus to them, or we want to be able to walk there and walk back and be able to get to those things, especially with the millennials, especially with the younger folks moving in. A lot of them like to, don't own a car, and they want to be able to walk or get on a bus or get an Uber and go do what they do and come back home. Access to health care, access to food, smart cities concept, school readiness, daycare, transportation, crime, recreation, workforce participation, landscaping, all were things that add to the attractiveness of the neighborhood. The 11th one we talked about was gentrification. And, you know, there's a number, especially in the South End of neighborhoods, and there are a number of homeowners in those places that either chose to stay in Middletown during the recession when things were bad, or their property values had gone down so much during the recession that they literally were forced to stay in their house because they simply would, would have lost everything if they had tried to sell their house. The last thing we want to do when we are working on all of this is to take people who have hung out with us and done all the right things and paid their taxes and done their job through all this time and stuck it out during the bad times and chase them out during the good times. And so we are going to look at things we can do that will allow them to continue to live in these neighborhoods as the values go up and things go on. And to that end, you know, the city always gets $650,000, around $650,000 in community development block grants. We have another $350,000 that comes to us from our home funds with our consortium with Butler County. We are going to look at downtown redevelopment districts, community reinvestment areas. We've got energy programs that are out there with Duke. There's the nonprofit partnerships. There's TIPS out there for infrastructure. Those are all things, again, we're not recommending, but there are things that we can look at that as we go into a neighborhood like Oakland and start doing things, we want to make sure that we are protecting those people to the best of our ability in a fair way as we do things and get their neighborhoods put back together again. So, having gotten through all of that list, we then started talking about how would we apply the first 11 in a target neighborhood that we would use for revitalization? And we talked about how would we look at picking a neighborhood? And we started that discussion by looking at the charts that you've got around you, and we consolidated them into one chart, the overall score. And the Oakland area and the Baltimore Street area is the most distressed, highest disinvestment neighborhood in the city of Middletown. It is also one of the top two or three neighborhoods of concentration of our Middletown City school kids, which means our school kids are living in the worst infrastructure, the highest crime, some of the poorest housing, and on and on in the neighborhood. So we talked about, do we do only one neighborhood at a time? How would we do this? But the idea is, we looked at it objectively. We didn't, we picked it based on the census data. We picked it on, again, all the data that's around the room here. And the idea was that Oakland, which is what they're calling it, the Baltimore area, was the highest disinvestment neighborhood, and we should start at the worst and work our way out. That worked for a few different reasons. Number one, it was our highest disinvestment neighborhood. Number one, it was, would have a large impact on our Middletown City school kids. Number three, Dan and Dan came in buying the Carnegie Library and wanting to redevelop it. We also had the failed school site, which was being cleared and open for redevelopment coming up. And this neighborhood fit well for Dan and Dan's concept of using the CLG and the historic designation to improve property values and get money invested into that neighborhood. That being said, Oakland is going to be our focus. It's not the only people we are talking to. I've got a meeting this week with Dicky Brandon. He's got property down on 8th and 9th Avenue, would like to start building houses down there. Bishop Green is talking to us about a new development out of Lafayette near Maine, back behind like 19th and 20th Avenue, that acreage back in there. And so we're talking to a lot of people that are starting to show interest in building in the South End. And so the idea is to work with all of them to the best of our ability to start getting positive investment going in those neighborhoods. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank the committee members who spent, I mean, 14, 15 months and untold nights, hours each night going through all of these things. Pastor Terry Colts, Celeste Didlick-Davis, Jason Hightower, Wendy Hunter, Mark Dixon, Lenny Robinson, Walter Leep, Dan Fishball, Dicky Brandon, the members of staff who came in and gave presentations, helped me take notes, helped me do presentations in the evenings. Steve Bohannon and Mayor Mulligan attended most of the meetings and gave great input. But this was a committee that was public. We had the members of the public. If you look down that list, there's also several real estate professionals, and that was the goal. We had realtors, we had bankers, we had developers, we had landlords, we had new constructions, we had remodelers. And the idea was to get the best overall professional view of what we should be doing with our housing. It was also a diverse group. You know, we, we were asked to put African-Americans on. Every time we had an opportunity to do so, we did it. So I would like to thank that group for all of their work publicly. We simply couldn't have done this without all of their hard work and their hours and hours and hours. That is all I have on the presentation. You will see at the motion agenda on September 3rd, a recommendation from staff to adopt this as the housing policy for the city of Middletown. And if that is done, it will be incorporated into the master plan that's being completed. So.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Atkins on this presentation?
I have a question, just to comment. Just wanted to thank you, Mr. Atkins. I wanted to thank some of the members of the committee that are here, Mr. Davis, Mr. Robinson. I know these are difficult issues, and thank you for taking the time and the manpower and just investing in the city. So, thank you for undertaking this massive endeavor and look forward to seeing the proposal.
Thank you.
Any else from council?
Yeah, this is a public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone who speak in favor of the proposed housing policy report from Mr. Atkins? Anyone speak in favor of the proposed policy? Ours, there any speaking opposition to the proposed policy adoption? Anyone speak in opposition to? Okay, hearing done. We'll close the public hearing, and we can go on to our city manager report. Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. The only thing I have left after being long-winded for the last half hour is, we met in a couple meetings ago and talked about 2020 budget priorities in a workshop. I asked council to kind of come back and give me an idea of what they were thinking. I I have assembled that. I will tell you that some of you gave me dollars, some of you gave me percentages, and some of you gave me low, high, and medium. And so, I have tried to incorporate everything that I heard into one chart. And so, we'll see how that works together. Paving sidewalks in median was either, and again, this is, some of you told me high, medium, and low, and some by the dollar amount you put, I assigned you a category. So, this is as close as I could get with the information I had. Paving sidewalks in median was identified by all of you as either a higher or medium priority. You recommended between basically 475 to 900,000 if you stated a dollar amount. Recreation was kind of across the board. Beautification was listed higher. Housing stock neighborhoods was higher, medium. Economic development was medium to low. Downtown plan implementation and deferred maintenance were low. Public safety, and again, I, that for the traffic officer and the fire station, you all agreed basically to continue that process in some fashion. City marketing, low priority for additional dollars. In transportation, given that we're doing our transportation plan, getting started with that, don't have any data, is more of a 2021 idea. We did have some comments, increasing youth opportunities, improve the Smith Park entrance for some of the soccer, lacrosse, and other events that we're having now, vacant building registration, marketing one of the properties, traffic calming, high accident interceptions on transportation. And so, the one thing I did want to state is you have in your agenda tonight, the first reading for the OPWC grant for next year. When I said that the University Bridge did not have any grants available, I wanted to clarify that. It does not have any new grants available for the bridge. We are going to continue to apply for the OPWC that we do every year, whether we spend that on the bridge or whether we spend that on paving. It's the same grant we get every year. So, I wanted to make sure I was clear that we're not, there are no new grants available that would help us with the bridge, if I wasn't clear before. So, I took what you did, and I laid it out to 1.2 million dollars. And this is how I laid it out, and this is my guesstimate. I kind of wanted you guys to look at this. I can take comments now, or if you, I can send this out by email if you want to give some time and think about it. But I tried to take what you had given us and lay that 1.2 million out, and if we're in the neighborhood of where we are, then the budget will look something like this when it comes to you in October. To do some of the other things you said, that 1.2 goes quick. The paving in median, I took 500,000, and I kind of made everything else work. And so, if you want more for paving, we'll have to pave, we'll have to carve money out of other areas and move it up. But this was the style of what I tried to do based on the numbers you gave me. And I'm open to comments. And again, if you want to think about it, I can send it out by email tomorrow to council, and you guys can give me comments individually. But this is kind of where I landed, based on the information you gave me, and
Initial thoughts?
Open to input that I've misinterpreted.
Okay. Any initial thoughts from council? I certainly like the idea of getting this by email. I would suggest, and maybe it's a little early, but if we were, because this is the additional money.
Correct.
It may be helpful to have an estimated amount for the 2020 budget for these areas that
Where we are now?
I know it's pretty early in the budget process, but that might be helpful. Look at the total picture, because while 500,000 looks a little smaller than here for paving, I mean, if we add in what we're doing with the rest of the
Right. But we have the additional auto, gas tax and things that are always
May help balance that out a little bit. That'd be my only suggestion, but I'd certainly appreciate it by
I can do that. I will, it might take me a day or two to assemble if I'm going to add the other stuff to it, but it would probably give you a lot better idea of the overall picture.
Do you have any, and it might be too early as well, but ideas around what, like when it says city beautification code enforcement, maybe at 125, is that talking about more people or, you know, is there a concept behind where the money would be spent?
I think that's where we would come back to you and say, you know, when we talked about code enforcement for a new code enforcement person with a vehicle and a computer that first year and all that's 100 grand.
Right.
After that, it's about 70. But to get that next position on the road, and so, if you're going to spend, you know, 125, and that means 100 of it's going to one person.
Right.
Which is fine. And 25 would go towards other things.
And like the 230 for the housing stock neighborhood, would that just accelerate what we were going to do in Oakland?
Those are, those are all the next set of questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that may include things like paving or some of the beautification things for the
Correct. If you're going to go into Oakland, and part of it's going to be putting the sidewalks and the streets back together and the alleys, and so, that could be, some of that could be put up. Your mark for paving, beautification by paving in Oakland theoretically.
Any initial thoughts from council?
All right.
I will try by the end of the week, have a chart out to you that gives you kind of, here's the 1.2, and then here's what's already laid into the budget.
Okay.
Hopefully give you good information.
Very good.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. All right. We have a few groups here to present. I'd like to invite Jeff and John from Self, down to present. Oh. Oh, that way they're not talking right at us, are they?
No.
On camera. I get you on camera. Okay. All right. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. Thank you for giving us a few minutes on your agenda this morning.
I think it's the center one, I think.
I'm sorry. Yep, that's what she said. It was the center one. Here we go. Great. I'm Jeffrey Diver. I'm the executive director of Self, supports to encourage low-income families. And we are the county community action agency, nonprofit organization, committed to helping families become self-sufficient through jobs, education, acquiring assets such as homeownership. And then, the big effort that we're talking about tonight is maintaining those assets through our home repair and renovations efforts. Just a quick background, we are 23 years old. We were founded by the late Janet Clemens, a county commissioner here in Butler County. Our mission, again, is to help families become self-sufficient. We do that through, again, through jobs, education, and asset building. We've been honored with 23 best practice awards, so we try to do what's most impactful in helping our families to achieve success. And we have nine programs to help families, all of which are available to Middletown residents. And we have a Middletown location at the old Social Service and Health Center at 9th and Yankee. I'm not going to go through these. You can read. You have the slides in front of you. But what we're here to talk about is a little bit about our home repair effort and our renovations effort. But we also have a training program to help teach construction skills called Build Up Academy. We have a micro enterprise and micro loan program, and that is to help aspiring low-income entrepreneurs to start a viable business. And then, they can acquire a micro loan of up to $5,000. We, of course, help people with utilities throughout the county. Also, we do signups for the weatherization program. One of the most impactful things that we're doing now also is Getting Ahead, which is helping people who are in generational poverty to develop a plan for their future, to develop goals for their success. The IDA program helps build homeowners, as well as to help business startups and folks to get an education through matched savings program. And our Jobs Now program is our employment program to help remove the barriers to folks acquiring and maintaining a job. And I'm now going to turn it over to John Post from our Housing Department, and he has some special guests also. But I just want to say thank you very much for the partnership we've had with the city of Middletown for many years. Councilman Moon is on our board. Councilman, Mayor Mulligan has been, was on our board for many, many, many years. And so, we do appreciate the partnership and working with the city of Middletown, and really looking forward to working with the city on the housing plan that you're considering. So, John?
Well, thank you for having us here tonight. I always enjoy coming here and letting you know what some of the things are happening here. As Jeff said, as the community action agency for Butler County, the Middletown residents have access to any of those programs year-round. So, if you know of someone that could be helped by one of them, like helping getting them jobs, construction training, any of those programs that we have, please send them our way, because that's what we're here for. Probably the two highest profile ones that I'm going to talk to you about tonight briefly are the Neighbors Who Care Home Repair Program and the Neighbors Who Care Renovations Program that we've been doing. The Home Repair Program's been going on 10 years now, and the renovations program, just for a couple of years. And we've shown some dramatic things that have come about it. The reason they're the most high-profile is because we're out in the community, we're doing work. I forgot to bring one of my signs that we put out in every yard, so people can call and find out how they can get involved, if they are of a certain income level, if they have building code violations, if they have a number of other issues, we'll be glad to help them out. Last year, and in the last couple of years, we've had over 1,500 volunteers give us over 22,000 hours of their time throughout the county. And about 30 to 40% of that, 35 to 40% of that ends up being here in Middletown. I thought today, I've shown you a bunch of stuff before, but I thought this was interesting. These, the first quarter, the different, we have about 12 young men, elderly men who help us with our renovations. They come out and join us three, four, or five times a month, and they help put our volunteer groups together, and they actually run them. And that helps Greg and myself actually run these programs. But I thought you'd be interested in seeing the different groups we brought to bear in Middletown during each quarter. In the first quarter, the Edgeline Center, New Life Chapel, Crossroads, AmeriCorps Vista, and the Build Up Academy, all worked in Middletown. The second quarter, when everybody's out, and it's the summertime, everyone loves to do volunteer work, we've had the chess group, and I won't mention them all, but I'll point out a few that are interesting. AK Steel, they send their people out now twice a year, and they give them the paid day off, and we get about 40 members out there working on homes exclusively in Middletown. This year, for the first time, First Baptist Church of Middletown. Our big programs are the Vineyards, which is the third week in June. In three days, we get over 600 young folks out throughout the county. Group work camps, as Doug alluded to, we've been doing that. Every other year, we have it here in Middletown, but every year, they do work in Middletown, even if they're going to be housed in Hamilton, which happens every other year. They work all over the county. And this year, every other year, Brill Boulevard Church of God comes out and gives us a week of about 50 to 80 of their parishioners who come out and work exclusively in Middletown. So, that's kind of cool. And then, and by the way, all the pictures you're going to see here are homes in Middletown that we worked on. This is, this picture here is AK Steel, working on a home. Third quarter, again, New Life Chapel, Miami University, our various AmeriCorps groups, and including the AmeriCorps and CCC team, who you're going to hear from in a minute, they're here for us for seven weeks. They work 40 hours a week, all eight of them, so a lot of hours being put into the communities. And we love having them here. And the fourth quarter so far, it gets to, starts snowing, no one wants to volunteer work out in the field, but we still have some hearty souls. AK Steel will have another day, which they'll be let off work and with pay, to come out and work in Middletown, as well as some of the other groups. This is a before and after picture of a house that was worked on during group work camps. I think it makes a tremendous difference. This was a building code violation, obviously, and Roger Mahaffey brought it to our attention, and we did the best we could to make it look better. These are other houses in Middletown that they worked on. And it's not only the work that we do here in the community, but it's also bringing young adults together and teaching them the value of volunteering and giving back to the community. We think that's an important life lesson, and it's very important to us as part of our mission. We're also blessed to, this year was our 1,000th home that we repaired. It happened here in Middletown. Judy and Eddie Simmons, we completely busted out some concrete steps that had broken out and replaced them with wood. And also, while we were there, we painted their garage and built a deck and steps and handrails off the back. Mrs. Sims, she's, she's had a hard time getting in. Actually, broke her ankle going down the old set of steps. Should have had a before picture there for you. Our other program is the renovations program. We've done now five houses. This was our first one in Middletown, and thanks to Doug and the, and the whole city, you entrusted us with a home that had been vacant for five years, that the only one that had been living there was a raccoon and some, and some squatters. We found some needles and some other things there. The house ended up, we had to put a new roof, new furnace, new hot water heater, and a lot of tender loving care on that. So, that's the before picture when we got it from the city. That's one of the pictures with one of our groups out there working on it at the time. And we have been lucky enough to now to sell the home, and we have a tax-paying resident in there, homeowner. Our program is based on, we don't want renters. We want to rehab homes and build and put low to moderate income, credit-worthy families into them, so they become stable members of the community. These folks happened to move from Monroe, so you got a little more, a couple more people here. He works up at the University of Miami in the maintenance department, and she works as a manager for Speedway. So, really nice people, and they deserve to be in that home, and they love it. To go along with what Doug was talking about, we converted this two-bedroom, one-bath house into a three-bedroom, two-bath house, which added value to the house, obviously. And here's a couple of quick pictures. That's what it looked like on November of 2017, when we first was looking at the house. I think we got it in like January of 2018. And then, that's the same hallway area upstairs in 2019 when we turned it over. And this is looking the other way in the upstairs also. That's what it was. It was, we had two dumpster loads of trash that we hauled out of there. The ceiling in the upstairs had completely collapsed, and most of the other drywall was either wet or on the verge of molding. Most of that came out and redone, and that's what it looked like there. So, we are excited about the renovations program. We got this from the land bank, and we hope to do more of these in the future. So, now our special guests, people who are giving us seven weeks of their lives, 40 hours a week, working hard. Come on up here, guys. So, Brittany. Brittany's the boss. You can tell by the green shirt. So, who are you going to have speak today?
I'm her.
Oh, good. There you go.
My name is Sarah Monks. I'm from Chicago, Illinois.
My name is Max Offord. I'm from Lake Wiley, South Carolina.
I'm Kaylee, and I'm from Winatchee, Washington.
Hi, I'm Travis, and I'm from Hampton, Georgia.
I'm Alec. I'm from Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Where did you, where were you living before?
I also lived in Liberty Township.
I'm Mauricio Pintado from Florida.
Hi, I'm Erin Lamberton from Connecticut.
And I'm Brittany. I'm from California. So, we're in the National Civilian Community Corps. We are serving for 10 months in the general areas of disaster response, rural, urban development, energy conservation, environmental stewardship. So, we're serving with Self, mainly with their repair program and some of their renovation work. We've done about a third of our homes we've worked on. We've done 22 so far, have about 10, maybe 15 more while we're here. We have about three, three and a half more weeks. So, we've done about a third in Middletown here, and we've really enjoyed it. Thank you guys for having us.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your work and dedication. It's certainly great to see the progress and all the help you've provided, so thank you.
That's precious. Do you all have any questions?
Anything for Mr. Post or Mr. Diver, council?
For the NCCC. Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the update. Very good. I have a couple of comment cards this evening. I'd like to invite
Julie.
Oh, Julie, that's right. Oh, okay. Julie, she's hiding over there. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. Ms. Julie Joyce Smith from
Thank you.
Thank you. I wish I could be nearly as inspiring as that, so I'm just going to cut to the chase. Normally, when I'm here, I'm talking about real estate and all that fun stuff that goes with it, but tonight, most of my topics are about gas. It's just the kind of way the, the ball bounces, I suppose. One of the items that, with this new legislative body is they, with the transportation tax, they increase the gas tax. And one of the questions that we're getting from a lot of communities is, when are we going to see the increase in the ta, the gas tax and the gas tax dispersal? And I'm here to tell you, I don't know. So I'm just going to cut to that. We are getting ready, our finance department is getting ready to do the July dispersment, which will be probably the end of August, and as of right now, they really haven't seen the numbers. So we're anticipating that we'll be dispersing it at the end of August. And we really don't know how far back they are. Are they a month behind, a quarter behind? So as we get more and more information, we will pass that on to all of you, because that's, you know, I know a lot of people are kind of anxious about that. They want to see how the numbers shake out. Secondly, if anyone had the, the privilege or had the opportunity to see us out at the fair, we were giving out our fans every year, which we do, which have great fanning ability. But on the other side, this year, we decided to feature our favorite human being on the face of the earth, which is this gentleman who spent twenty minutes on a hidden camera in a gas pump in Fairfield, and provided us with all his really unique markers and tattoos, his jewelry, his grills in his mouth, and then even at times, he was using his cellphone to light it, and we could actually kind of sort of see who he was talking to. So he was really pretty fantastic in giving us a lot of clues, including his fingerprints. And then, he was stopped in a routine traffic stop down in Louisville, Kentucky, and because he had applied for asylum, we had his, they had his fingerprints, so we get to keep him in custody here for at least a little while longer. So he's now a friend of the FBI in addition to a friend of the Auditor's Office. So we're very happy about that. At the time, we were kind of secretive about our hidden cameras, and we weren't sure we were going to get much on them. Aside from some critters that set off the cameras a couple times, we were fortunate enough to get this gentleman, so we're happy to respond with that. And we are continuing to monitor gas pumps primarily along the heavily traveled roads, interstates, and things of that nature. So we're still moving on with that. The other item is that we're still trying to push for the fuel quality testing in Ohio. Not really sure, you know, now that the biennial budget bill has finally moved through, we're kind of hoping to see some, any legislation come through, other than with, tied to the biennial bill. And then finally, if you're interested, anyone, anyone, we do have our popular annual financial report, also known as the PAFR. Someone asked me recently, why the ice sculpture of Rock'em Sock'em Robots? And I said, well, I know we were featuring Ice Fest, but my only explanation is this just depicted the constant struggle between expenditures and revenues. And I thought that was a pretty great answer, until I found out, no, the guy that took the picture just really liked Rock'em Sock'em Robots. So I'm still sticking with my original answer. If anyone would like a copy, I have a few. If I don't have enough, and you want more, please just holler, I'll, I'll get them in the mail to you. I think I have four, just for fucking grin. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them. If not...
Any questions, Ms. Smith? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your updates. Appreciate you coming today. All right, now I have a couple cards this evening, like to invite Ms. Adrian Shear. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Adrian Shear. My office is at eleven oh eight Central Avenue. I actually say that Monroe surrounds my home, but Middletown surrounds my heart. Anyway, I really came just for a little uplifting thing. I know that all of us have been kind of stressed out over the past couple of years, working on the Dora and getting it to be working, and I'm telling you, the Dora and the Broad Street Bash are really perfect together. It used to be when the Dora was in fact, in effect, and there was nothing going on, or you couldn't come out to the Bash because we had a special event permit, there was no unification of them. Now that people can go to any of the establishments downtown, get a drink, bring it out, enjoy the Bash, we do notice perhaps twenty percent of the people who are there have on a Dora bracelet and a drink of another color besides beer. And we should be sad about that, but we're not, because that's what the Dora and the Bash are supposed to do together. Give the people who go to those places a reason to carry it outside and enjoy a concert. In fact, I would like to report that in thirteen years of marvelous quality of event, things that we've had, we have never had anything as awesome as our last two concerts. The first one was all about Deadheads. I'm telling you, Deadheads know how to party. They were out in force, and the last concert was every single song came from the stage of Woodstock fifty years ago. And what, what went on there that was so exciting for me to observe was because those aren't songs that current-day bands play. A drummer from one band and a keyboard player from another one and a vocalist from another one had to actually give up their turf war and get together and play these songs, and they did it well. And I have to tell you, when Rick House did Jimi Hendrix rendition of the National Anthem on the guitar, I was so proud of our town. People were standing, their hands were on their hearts, and when it was over, they cheered, and I'm about to cry. It just made me cry. I was so proud of our town. And I just wanted to come and report that. Jim Stiver's been my right hand, left hand, listening to me crab and carry on for thirteen years, and he's here being nervous, so he must have something he wants to say.
It's been a total pleasure working with Adrian here, and even more of a pleasure doing the Bash for thirteen years. In case you don't know, I run the beer booth, and that creates its own little problems, and I am a survivor.
He's a beer Nazi.
That's my code name, Beer Nazi.
Okay.
So if you do come, I'll probably be having a hand in getting you served.
I will say that the Dora is causing us a lot of financial strife. We don't sell as much beer as we used to. In fact, we're down forty percent per concert, which means we're losing money every concert. I did do a little proposal that I gave, sent to all of the city council members. I just hope you kind of take it seriously and come back and give me an idea what you think about it, because I don't think corporate America really wants to hear from us anymore.
Okay. Appreciate you coming down this evening and sharing the updates, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I've got one other card from Reverend Childers. There you go. Hiding back there. Okay. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. One, two, three, Jody Drive. So thanks again for having me. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to first address a statement that I made in the August sixth meeting. I previously insinuated that during that meeting that America was directly funding the Palestinian Authority Martyrs Fund, or what some folks call the Pay to Slay Program. And so what I should have said and explained more carefully is that America is a benevolent country, and through our foreign aid assistance, we like to help other countries and organizations. However, when it was discovered that our foreign aid was most likely being misaligned with other funds of the Palestinian Authority indirectly to their three-hundred-twenty-five million dollar Martyrs Fund, that is when Christians United for Israel got behind the Taylor Force Act to put a stop to it. And what is that fund? Is a fund operated by the Palestinian Authority for the purpose of paying a monthly cash stipend to families of the Palestinian, Palestinians killed, injured, or imprisoned for their involvement in attacking, assisting in attacking, and planning attacks to Israelis, and for other types of politically inspired violence, including riots, riots, violent demonstrations, throwing rocks, and also paying cash stipends to the families of innocent bystanders during those violent events. In addition, provides pocket money to all Palestinians imprisoned in Israel for just ordinary crimes. The fund traces its origins, created by Fatah in nineteen sixty-four to support widows and orphans of the Palestinian, I have already pronounced that word, Fedayeen. The scheme has been described as the Pay to Slay Program, which encourages terrorism. So I want to make that public record for getting my words jumbled up, Amy Thermoel for the three-minute thing there.
Wow.
But with that, last time I was here, I asked for a resolution of anti-Semitism, if the city of Middletown would adopt it, and so have you reached a decision?
We have not, but we're starting to take that in advisement, and I'll wait to hear from the rest of council and decide where to go, so. Appreciate you coming down this evening.
Okay, may I share one more quick story, since I haven't seen the lights?
Please, yeah.
Anybody ever heard of Hayman Solomon? He was around in the American Revolution. He, George Washington was out of money, out of ammo and out of food. He got with some other guys. He was a Jewish immigrant over here during the American Revolution, and he helped raise the money to support George Washington so he could win the American Revolution. And when it was all said and done, what can we do for you to repay you for your act of kindness? He said, nothing, but you can do something for my people. And if you look on the back of a one-dollar bill, that is the reason the Star of David is on the back of the one-dollar bill. Therefore, is widely accepted that is the beginning of our Judeo-Christian values. So I encourage you, I think that's just a fascinating piece of information, that hopefully we can move forward with this, okay? So thank you all very much.
Appreciate you coming down tonight. All right, and with that concludes our comments this evening. Our next agenda item is an executive session. Good to go on that. So I need a motion in the authority of high rise code one-twenty-one point two-two G four, preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Still moved?
Second. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right, following executive session, we'll reconvene for our consent agenda. We'll probably be fifteen minutes to half an hour.
Fifteen to a half, yeah.
So for those that are waiting, fifteen minutes to half an hour. It's quarter till seven now, so we'll shoot for seven and go from there. Okay, I'll call our August twentieth, two thousand nineteen meeting back to order. We're releasing our executive session. Next agenda item is our consent agenda. Ms. Gank? Oh, we do need a roll call. Okay, coming back from the executive session, so. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please? Oh, we're coming back from executive session. Okay, thank you. Makes this official, we need a motion to come back from executive session.
Oh, still moved?
Second. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda.
Your consideration this evening, with the approval of the city council minutes of August the sixth, two thousand nineteen, to confirm the personnel appointment of Jonathan Winkler to the position of maintenance worker in the Department of Public Works and Utilities, Street Maintenance Division, to receive and file board and commission minutes of the planning commission from February thirteenth and April the tenth, two thousand nineteen, Board of Zoning Appeals from March the sixth and May the first, two thousand nineteen, and the Board of Health from July the ninth, two thousand nineteen, to approve the purchase of a new Ford F three-fifty Parks truck off of the ODAS contract for the Division of Park Maintenance in the total amount of thirty-one thousand, fifty-two dollars and forty-four cents from Middletown Ford, to approve a contract with Smartville LTD of Hebron, Ohio, for the printing and mailing of the city's tax bills in the amount of thirteen, one...
One point one cent.
One, one-three dollars. One-three, one dollars. How about that? Yeah.
Point one-three-one cents apiece plus current postage rates. This contract will run from September first, two thousand nineteen, through August the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, with three optional one-year renewal periods, and to approve the purchase of fiber circuit services for Fire Station eighty-five and the wastewater treatment plant off the ODAS contract in the total amount of one thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars per month from Spectrum.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval of issues and actions listed on consent agenda?
Still moved?
Second. Hey, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
And we have two motion items this evening?
To receive and file a petition for additional no-through trucks signs to be posted on Lafayette Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, we have also received this through staff. I have both Public Works and Middletown Police Department looking at it. They have indicated they do think the signage could be placed in either more or better placed to help in that situation, and MPD is looking at additional enforcement to try to work on that as well.
Okay. Any questions for council?
Well, just aside, I have received comments about excessive speeding on Lafayette as well, so I know that chief is aware of that, so if I could incorporate it into the enforcement, that would be great.
I will do that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion, receiving file petition for no additional through truck signs to be posted on Lafayette Avenue.
Still moved?
Second. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
And secondly, to approve the donation of a nineteen ninety-seven Laverne fire engine to the island nation of Saint Vincent, Vincent and the Grenadines.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, this particular fire engine was taken out of frontline status back in two thousand nine, ten years ago, and has taken out of reserve status in the line of this year. Truck has extensive mechanical and water tank leak issues. It's in very poor condition. Laverne has also gone out of business, so they don't even have parts to make for it anymore. Division of Fires worked with Cincinnati firefighter Walt Cook, who searches the United States for obsolete fire equipment and gear to send to several nations in the Caribbean, Central and South America. We have previously donated our firefighting gear and our breathing apparatus on a few occasions to the Dominican Republic for firefighting and police services. It was no longer met our NFPA standards and therefore could not be used in the United States. We would have discarded it. This is a nice use. The nineteen ninety-seven fire engine has little or no resale value. The scrap value is estimated to be at fourteen hundred dollars. Middletown Division would like to donate the engine to the island of the nation of Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, and I think in the staff report, if you saw the pictures, they are literally using a pickup truck with a hose and a water tank on the back. That's their fire engine, and so they are delighted to have this. I just happened, while I was sitting here preparing for the meeting, to pull up, because I had no idea where it was. It is a five-mile-long island. It is a tiny little island in the middle of the... St. Vincent and the Grenadines, and I think in the staff report, if you saw the pictures, they are literally using a pickup truck with a hose and a water tank on the back. That's their fire engine, and so they are delighted to have this. I just happened while I was sitting here preparing for the meeting to pull up, because I had no idea where it was. It is a five-mile-long island. It is a tiny little island in the middle of the Caribbean that this engine, once it's repaired, will reach anywhere in about 18 seconds, because it only has to go 75 feet. But it's a very nice thing for them, and we have no use for it, and it's a great reuse of that piece of equipment, and staff is recommending that we do that.
Very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation of a 1997 Laverne fire engine to the island nation of St. Vincent and the Grenadines.
Still moved? Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to council comments this evening. Start with Mr. Mulligan.
Thank you, Your Honor, no comments tonight.
All right, Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things I'd like to thank Mr. Atkins for all his hard work on the Housing Committee project, and also thank all the volunteers that have helped revitalize a little bit of Middletown. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vettori?
No comments.
Vice Mayor Moon?
Nothing this evening.
All right, I too would just like to mention a couple of things. We have the Labor Day concert coming up at Woodside Cemetery, always a great event that's put on there at Woodside. The Butler Philharmonic is coming to present. It's going to be on Sunday with a date of Monday, always a great time. And we have First Friday coming up early September. That's the Dog Days, if I remember, is it? No?
This one is Fall in Love with Art.
Fall in Love with Art, okay. Dog Days is going to be...
Dog Days is going to be not a First Friday, it's going to be its own event.
Okay, see, I lose track. There's so much going on, I lose track. A lot of great things going on downtown. And I too would like to express my appreciation to staff and the Housing Committee, probably made two-thirds or three-quarters in the meetings, but really appreciate their input and dedication. A lot of research went into that, I know a lot of time and effort, and I think we've got a great product and look forward to seeing that implemented. It'll take a number of years, but I think we've set the direction, and I think it's very helpful. So, appreciate all the hard work that's gone into that.
Thank you.
And with that, we can move on to legislation, but we have one additional motion item to consider.
Yes, Your Honor. We are in receipt of a FactFinder's report regarding the city's labor negotiations with the Frontal Order for the Police. It was issued August 9 by FactFinder Alan Rubin. We need to entertain a motion this evening to either accept or reject the recommendations of the FactFinder.
Okay, we discussed this in the executive session. Is there a motion to accept or reject the FactFinder's report?
Still moved.
To reject?
Oh, yes, to reject.
Okay, just so we're clear, okay?
Yes, to reject.
To reject, okay, all right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two matters we're asking you to consider as emergencies this evening, so it asks for a motion to waive charter requirements for two readings in 30 days to enactment regarding ordinance O-2019-43 and resolution R-2019-21.
I move to waive the charter provision requiring readings on two separate days and to declare the previously read ordinance and resolution an emergency measure and read one time only.
Second.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
The first matter is ordinance O-2019-43, an ordinance establishing a procedure four in authorizing a contract with Phoenix Stabilization LLC to perform subgrade stabilization on Benita Drive and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Atkins, I think you've presented this previously.
Correct, Your Honor, nothing further.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
The next matter is resolution R-2019-21, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio for the period ending December 31, 2019, and declaring an emergency. This involves the general fund, the stormwater, water, and sewer funds.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, I know we had a presentation on this before too, for Middletown moving forward loan repayment. Anything to add, Mr. Atkins?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, anything for council? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Number three is resolution R-2019-23, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio for the period ending December 31, 2019. This involves the general fund and the airport funds, and it's here for a second reading.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Second reading, any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Number four is ordinance O-2019-44, an ordinance designating the former Carnegie Library located at 1320 First Avenue as a historic landmark site and recommending the site to the National Register of Historic Places of the U.S. Department of the Interior, also a second reading.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Number five is ordinance O-2019-45, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement with NVR Incorporated, doing business as Ryan Homes, to waive the water and sewer tap-in fees. This is a second reading.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or comments?
I would like to offer some comments, Mayor. I shared this previously in an email to council and staff, but a couple of points about this, and normally I would accept a staff's recommendation for economic development, but in this case, I've got some real reservations. The $5,000 waiver for 273 properties represents about $1.4 million in lost water and sewer revenue, and we're asking the city taxpayer to forsake that 1.4 million, and we're getting nothing in return. The consent decree related to the development of this property was agreed to back in 2004, and that required brick and stone on front elevations, and Ryan Homes knew about that, and also our architectural standards require brick and stone on the front elevations. In my view, we either have architectural standards or we don't, and if we do, we don't need to beg or cajole, or beg, I'm sorry, beg, cajole, or bargain home builders to comply with those standards. If you want to build in Middletown, here's what you need to do, and we made it pretty simple to understand. Secondly, forsaking almost $1.4 million in water and sewer tap-in fees is unfair to our existing water and sewer customers. Those tap-in fees represent sorely needed funds to maintain and rebuild our infrastructure per the EPA's Long-Term Control Plan, and that comes at the cost of $270 million to our ratepayers. In comparison, Ryan Homes is owned by NVR Incorporated, a publicly traded company with a market cap of $13 billion, and that's billion with a B. For comparison, I drove to Terror Estates, a Ryan Homes development in Carlisle, excuse me, in Franklin Township, which is in Carlisle School District. The sign there said that the home started at $190,000, so it would be comparable to what's going in at Sawyer's Mill. I was interested to see if the Ryan Homes included brick and stone fronts, and they did. Every one had brick and stone fronts, and I was curious if the Warren County Water District provided a rebate or a waiver of the water and sewer tap-in fees. After talking with representatives, I was unaware of any arrangement of a waiver. Instead, my understanding is that Ryan Homes is paying $5,200 per home for tap-in fees. If Ryan Homes can cover that cost in Franklin Township, it should be able to absorb that cost in Middletown. As with any other business that wants to do business in Middletown, I wish Ryan Homes the best. However, Ryan Homes profitability is not the concern of the Middletown taxpayer, and it's not my concern either. If Ryan Homes cannot make sufficient profit in this robust housing market, then Ryan Homes should examine its management and sales practices rather than trying to take advantage of us. In my view, this is a bad deal for the city of Middletown. At the beginning of this meeting, we had excerpts from the Danter Housing Study from 2016. That report indicates there is a need for 127 new homes in Middletown each year for the next five years. If that's the case, then there is sufficient demand for new homes, and Ryan Homes should do very well without this waiver. I thank you, Your Honor, and that's my comments.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. My colleague, I know you weren't on board two years ago or three years ago when all this started, the negotiations and so forth, and after talking with Mr. Atkins, I'd like for you to reiterate what we talked about as far as the consent decree, what's available, what can be built, what can't be built, and that type of thing.
Well, putting me in an interesting...
Just speak your mind.
But, no, when we started this discussion, Republic came to us and said, "We have Ryan Homes in tow, and they would like to come in and build in this." It's been sitting vacant since 2001 is when they quit building, but they would bring an all-vinyl product to the subdivision, and I said, "I'll go talk to council and see how they feel about that." And that time, as I remember, we were talking to council, and I said, "You could accept the vinyl, you could negotiate to do it," because they said, "We're only coming if we take that out of the consent decree, or you can negotiate to keep the standards up that we want, or we can tell them we're not interested, and thank you." "No, no thank you." And at that time, the council that was in place said, "We're interested in hearing more. We are not interested in vinyl. We would want brick and stone and see if there's a deal out there that would allow us to move forward under those conditions." And that was the beginning of the conversation. They simply weren't coming to talk to us at all, and Republic had that property and simply wasn't going to do anything with it. They were just going to sit there with it. So, this is the deal we made. It was made two years ago by handshake, that yes, we'll have brick and stone, we'll waive appropriate tap-in fees to do it. We have removed liens, we have worked with three different developers. I mean, this has been two and a half years of changing the consent decree. There's a lot of work that's gone into putting this deal together, but it only started because council said we were willing to look at incentivizing what we wanted on those houses. Because again, without that, it's either vinyl product or go away. Those are the only other two options.
And no other type of multifamily or anything like that could be built on that property at this stage of the game?
The consent decree says, if you're going to develop it, this is exactly what can go there. You would have to go back to federal court and change the consent decree again and get permission from the judge to change its standards.
And we are going to be receiving close to $500,000, though, in sewer tap-in fees, correct?
Correct. We will get everything beyond the, it's $7,000 a home, we're waiving $5,000, which means we'll get 2,000 or 273 homes or whatever it is, roughly $500,000, roughly $50,000.
Plus all the income tax that we will receive off of it.
Income tax, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I certainly share Mr. Mulligan's concern about that, but having lived through some of the tours and some of the discussions, you know, the upside to this is we're getting, you know, 273 homes of a couple hundred thousand dollars in value, which does a lot to improve the real estate values and the assessed values in Middletown, and more importantly, too, long-term, I understand there's a give-up on the initiation or the tap-in fees, but the ongoing revenue from having additional users for both sewer and water does help burden, or spread that burden over a larger base, and, you know, softens the impact in my book a little bit, but certainly, you know, there are some challenges with it. If there are no other comments?
Well, I guess my final point is that we could have gotten this without the waiver. I think we need to be tougher on negotiating with these deals. Thank you.
Understood. All right, with that, Ms. Gank, you can call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
No.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right, ordinance passes. Okay.
Next matter is ordinance O-2019-46, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to consent to the city of Middletown participating in the Ohio Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program, also here for a second reading.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, we had a presentation and discussion on this last time. Any other questions from council? Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Number seven is resolution R-2019-24, a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application to the Ohio Public Works Commission for Project Year 34, requesting funding for the replacement of the bridge deck for University Boulevard between State Route 122 and 14th Avenue to enter into agreements for such funding and declare an emergency. No action requested until September 3.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, as you're aware, we're replacing the deck on the bridge that carries University Boulevard over the Conrail Railroad between State Route 122, excuse me, and 14th Avenue next year. The cost of that project is approximately $2,050,000. As I stated earlier when I was talking about the OPWC, we get a grant every year from them. We typically use it for paving, and this year, well, we will probably use it for the bridge replacement, which will eat into the paving money that we have available, but this is the standard year, the standard grant that we get each year from OPWC.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Next matter is resolution R-2019-25, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor and declaring an emergency. No action requested until September 3.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor, mid-year, the Middletown City Council approves its annual tax budget for the following year and submits it to Butler County Commission for review. They then review it and send it back to us, and this is the resolution accepting what they sent back. This is the final piece in the process.
Okay, questions from council?
Next matter is resolution R-2019-26, a resolution honorably designating a portion of Reinhardt's Boulevard between Charles Street and Clark Street as Private Patrick L. Kessler Memorial Way. This is here for a first reading.
Okay, Mr. Atkins?
Your Honor, we had a presentation on this in the first reading at the last meeting. Since that time, council had asked to waive the two-year naming rights for that and make it a permanent designation. After discussion with staff, we agreed that the cleanest way to do that was to start over with a new first reading. We are waiving the two-year time limit only for this application. The policy that you passed earlier in the year stays in effect, but this will then come second reading at the next meeting and be a permanent designation moving forward.
Okay, any questions from council? Thank you.
Next matter is ordinance O-2019-47, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Duke Energy for capital upgrades to convert streetlights to LED heads. This is a first reading.
Okay, Ms. Atkins?